All right. I call this committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. We have no remote electronic attendance, correct? Correct. Correct. So we first start with our oath of office. Jesse Green.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you for his swearing in Jesse Green. Jesse comes to us, he was born and raised in Andalusia and graduated from Rock Ridge High School. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. He is a proud member of the United States Army Reserves, and so we're very proud of that fact. And he still serves to this day. He's an Illinois certified EMT basic, so we'll be sending him to a paramedic class here in the very near future, and then after that, the fire academy. So he is joined this evening by his wife Emily, his daughter Lila, and his son August, and his mother Leah, and his father Darren. And Mayor, I would be very thankful if you'd swear this on me, so we can use you.
Hi, Jesse Green.
Hi, Jesse Green.
Having been duly appointed to rank of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Having been duly appointed to rank of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And I have junior firefighter.
I should have.
Sorry, Chief Cole.
Congrats again. And Chief, are you taking family pictures?
We would offer that service. If you'd like family to join, we could get some picture up here.
Good, congratulations once again, and a welcome aboard. You'll note in our next items of business, there are a few appointments to youth commission and project management team. Are there any other questions on the agenda?
Mayor, just that the public art and place making presentation, as noted, has been postponed.
Yep, we're postponing the public art and place making policy presentation to July 3rd. Need a little more time for Mr. Vitas and for staff to weigh in on some of the items in it, so have a full package.
To July?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, okay.
Our next meeting, yes.
Thanks.
All right, so now, next up is a presentation on TaxSlayer Center funding request. Mr. Mullin. Oh, thank you, Mr. Von Osgood.
Appreciate everybody giving us an audience here today, and we've got a few requests that we want to run by everybody. And basically, you know, we've been shut down since March 12th of 2020, and we've had no income. And so we've been depleting our reserves, and I don't know if you're familiar with our contract, when we, when our money runs out, then we have to become supported by the city. So, you know, I'm thinking on this, it would be a logical thing to do if we've got some government money to try to get, put it back into the building. We drive economic impact, and we could return it probably tenfold what we're asking for. And we're asking for quite a bit less than most other communities are, but this is what we thought was practical. And Janine made some copies of some of the correspondence back and forth. You can read that out of your own time. I don't need to read everything here, but there's basically four things total that we have put into this request. We have $6 million in capital improvement projects to do, but I didn't include any of those things. We've done a couple million dollars in the past year since while we've been shut down trying to improve the building, and our reserves will be down to about 2 point, or what did I say, 2.4 by September, depending on how our upcoming events do. And one of the things I was asking for was to try to get some money to restart. Originally, I'd asked for $500,000 when this first became known to me back in March, to try to get us open when we got to the restricted capacity situation where we went, we're at 30%, and then went to 60% bridge phase, and then before we can get to 100%. But since most of that time has passed, then we're down, I'm thinking, we just dropped that down to 100,000. I had one out and bought a show, a show or two that are coming up just to get the building open. We've got a lot of employees account of us, account on us. We have, you know, hundreds of employees, all the downtown businesses that count on us. So we wanted to get going, so we've got something coming up on July 9th, the first show. And we just wanted to get started. So it would be great if we could subsidize some of that cost it's going to take to get our employees back and paying for them, keeping them on and running those events. And then the other asks are for an outdoor venue where we've got a vision of building. They did this in Hoffman Estates, where the Sears Center, it's called the Now Center now. They've got a great venue. It's basically same type of a footprint as what we're looking at, the space between us and the Radisson on John Deere Commons. It's just an outdoor venue. I don't know if you've ever seen Tanglewood over in Bettendorf, but it's a stage that plays bands on weekends. It would give the hotels something more that they can use for advertising and lure people here and more for the downtown. It would be a restaurant, probably open for lunch. We've talked with Jeff Harrop of Bass Street about operating it along with us, and we could have it for prior to football games and hockey games and things like that. It'd be a big hit. So I think it'd really add to the ripper front element of downtown. And the estimated cost to build it, we had Bush Construction run some numbers, and it was like 1.4 million dollars. We're hoping, we're hearing that we're going to get $750,000 from the state out of their money. Mike Halpin was working on that, and I haven't seen anything or heard a timeline on that, but it sounds like it's in that budget. So that would leave about $700,000 balance that we'd be asking for to put towards this. And it would generate, you know, a lot of additional income and revenues downtown. And then, of course, our sports teams, they've missed out on almost all of the funding that's gone around, that nobody really took minor league sports into account. And these aren't, you know, George Steinbrenners with, you know, a gazillion dollars. Sorry. But they're guys that invest their own money. And when they lost this money, they lost their own money, and they have, you know, a lot, their life savings invested in this. And football's lost two full seasons, hockey's lost one. And so if there's an opportunity to help them out, the pandemic, it's not their fault. They were doing well, and now we're in jeopardy of keeping them here. And if we lose them, it would mean millions of dollars of lost economic impact to the city. There were studies done by, we asked Dave Harrell to plug it into his economic calculator, and the numbers are in there. But it's, the economic impact is huge. And, you know, to get combined, we're, you know, based on the events that I've seen in the calculator, just in what other cities have calculated for arenas like ours for economic impact, we figure somewhere between 80 and 120 million in economic impact annually from our events that we produce. But, you know, a part, a big part of that is our sports team. So the numbers are in their presentations that they're going to do in a second, but where's that clicker? So we got, I got some pictures here of what we had, an architect drew some drawings.
Yeah, you want to click at this one here.
So an architect just did some renderings of basically what it would look like. Some fire pits so we could be open a longer portion of the year. There's tables that can be moved depending on what type of event it is. We would do caterings out there for some of the things that we have in our venue. On the left side, you can see kind of a patio area on the left that we would do some events, and we do wedding receptions, business meetings. On the right is Bass Street Chop House where we would, where Fridays used to be, where you come out there, it's, we'd try to put a patio there, and then to the right of that, restrooms that would be attached to the hotel. And it'd be something that we would try to have just live music in the summer months on Fridays and Saturdays, so it wouldn't compete with Bass Street Landing. And basically just open for lunch, we'd have a video screen on it that we could show sporting events or concert videos, or maybe stream what's going on inside the arena if there's a hockey or football game. We'd have to relocate like the sculpture that's out there. But it's, it'd be a really neat thing for downtown, try to bring people down here, and I think it'd be just a great way, a great use of the river. And then we're also talking about with Jeff Nelson, he's got a project to try to widen the bike path and put it up on that berm that's there behind, where that stage is along the river, to make it safer and wider, and it goes along with his dock project. So that would, we'd still have that coming out behind the facility so people could ride bikes along the river still. And then it would be fenced in just so we can control if there's, you know, beer coming in and out, and just, just to secure it, but it would be open to the public for the most part. People can bring their pets down there and sit there and watch whatever we have going on. The one that, the one that they have in Hoffman Estates, they were projecting $600,000 in income this year. It's really a big hit there, and they made like $400,000 during COVID, so they're, it's really a hit in Hoffman Estates. So that's something that really could, could benefit the community. And, you know, when the train comes in, it gives people something to do downtown. The hotels love it, and they could almost, being, that one being right next to the Radisson almost gives it like a resort status or something, the next level up with a, with entertainment venue right next to it. That's part of the thing. So I'm going to let these guys talk, and then I'll just come back and wrap up at the end. And I'll take your questions in. Any?
This is Doug Land. He's, Doug flew up from Texas today for this, and he wants to talk about things that he needs.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for allowing us to come in here and talk. Since 2017, I've been working with Scott to move the team. You know, obviously, people who have lived here knew the Steamwaders were here for 10 years, and then they went away for 10 years. And then after several conversations with Scott, we were able to revitalize the franchise. For the 2018 season was our first, our first season back. We, we led the league in attendance. We broke all attendance figures when the team came back. We made the playoffs in our very first year. We were profitable. Local ownership, myself, I lived here the whole time. And you can see the crowd that we had there. It was, anybody that was downtown during those times, I mean, you couldn't find a parking spot. Every restaurant was sold out. Every hotel was sold out. I mean, it was, it was quite the scene to have football back in the Quad Cities after a 10-year layoff. And we, we put a world-class team on the field, like I said, made it into the playoffs in the first year, and, and had really something really big to build upon. In 2019, we moved to the largest league in the whole United States of America, became a full national franchise. So we went to the indoor football league with teams like the Arizona Rattlers, the San Diego Strike Force, teams from Boston's Dallas. I mean, we became, Quad Cities became on the same level of playing competition as those big, major metropolitan cities. We revitalized a couple of really unique rivalries with Iowa Barnstormers, which is kind of probably one of the biggest names in indoor football, and then the Green Bay Blizzard, which used to be in the league when the, when the Steamwaders were here back in the early 2000s. We did a lot of community-based stuff. We worked with the Riverbed Food Bank and John Deere, and we generated over 30,000 meals for the last fortunate here in the Quad City area through some of the promotions we did on game nights. And again, it was another profitable season. We were, you know, operating on a profit. Then good old 2020 came around. Timing couldn't have been any worse for us. How the sports business works, I don't know. You know, just to explain a little bit about, you only make money on your home games, and we have seven, eight home games basically a year. So at the end of that season, you've got a cougher of money that you have to use from the last game in June all the way through to when you open the season back up in February, March. So all that money, we used all season long or all off-season to do all our planning, preparation, purchasing of everything to prepare for the 2020 season. We had our first training camp start on February 20th. You have all the expenses of flying in, all the players, everything that you have to do to prepare for that season, knowing that on June, or on March 21st, we're going to have that first home game, and that starts to refill your coffers. Well, on March 7th, we had our first road game, which even a worse gut punch, because on a road game, you have to pay for your flights, you have to pay for your hotels, you have to pay for everything. So we had that on March 7th, had a blowaway victory. And we were, our team was really ranked in the top, top four in the whole league. We had a chance to win it all. Then March 12th comes around, shuts down the whole country. We literally had contracts with housing, we had to pay, I mean, we had so much stuff that it's just like you ramped everything up, and then the rug was pulled off from underneath of us. Then October 16th, the league came to us and said, hey, we're going to try to do it again in 2020, the 2021 season. At that point, we essentially could not make any commitments to the league. Of the 16 teams in the league, there's 10, 10 of them that are playing right now, but they're, they're doing it because they're in a state that allowed indoor gatherings at a limited capacity at time. And at that point, we, there's no way we could commit to that. So we had to file for dormancy for the 2021 season. So that's two years in a row, we've lost 100% of our revenue stream from our sponsorships, our season ticket holders, our game night promotions, everything we've lost for two complete seasons. And then, you know, a little bit about our community impact. Whenever we have a home game, the week of our home games, we send our players out to the local schools, they do autograph sessions, they engage with them out in the playgrounds, and, and then every school that we're at, they, they get free tickets, for kids' tickets to go in the game, because we know the kid can't come to the game by himself, so mom and dad are going to have to bring them along. So it's a really neat thing that we do in the community and tied in with some of the charities. Like I said, we tied in a lot with John Deere and the other large employers here in town to work with them and try to build the brand and build the team. So now down to the, basically the community impact, this study obviously is, the numbers you guys see in the handout you did. They did this through the Visit Quad Cities, hired a third-party company to come in and do a study specifically for the Steamwaders, generated 425,000, almost $426,000 in local taxes, 414 jobs directly and indirectly, and $7.3 million in direct economic impact through all of our games, our training camps, our tryouts, everything that happens throughout a season. Again, and some of the things we did with the 30,000 meals. And one of the big things that people don't understand by having a professional sports franchise, it's a national sports franchise, is the quality of life in all the employers in town. It helps to attract new young talent to come work for your companies here, because there's things to do on the weekends, there's stuff, a team that's root for. And, you know, when I came out of school, I moved to Southern California because I had all those neat things that I could have. And, you know, the companies like John Deere and the folks that are here are looking for that young, good talent to come and move to the Quad Cities. Without professional sports, it's just one more obstacle you're going to have to overcome, because they're looking at things to do with their life when they get off of work. You know, and then the pride of community, I mean, when we made the playoffs in that first year, the, the people came and met the bus that night. I mean, it's just, if you've ever been to a Steamwaders game, it's, it's just a really intense and a really fun thing for the whole family, and we have such a great pride in the community here. So again, I just want to thank you here for letting me show you. And there's the other thing here, I guess, obviously the money part of it. Unfortunately, we were not able to obtain any PPP money whatsoever. We were, the business interruption funds, we have not received one penny of support since March 12th of last year. So all the bills that we basically had were some of the sponsors that had paid in advance. We burnt through all that. We had some reserves, we had to refund season ticket holders because we've gone two seasons now without games. And the impact what it's had on us right there, the $217,000, is essentially what we need just bare bones to get the team on the field and make sure that, that we are going to be back flying the Quad City banner for the 2021 season, or 2022 season, I'm sorry. And so that, that's what I have there for my presentation. And afterwards, if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, I'll go Doug and Scott, appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. Something Doug kind of touched on that I think is important, and I think also to what Scott said, a big reason we've been missed. When you think of small businesses, you don't think of sports teams, really. George Steinbrenner is, he's not running a small business, we are. At our largest, we have had 10 employees in our business office. Of course, we have our players, but they're out on the ice getting the job done in the office. We've had 10 people at our largest, currently two, it was one for a while. And we are also a new business, which really the group of small businesses have been hit hardest by this pandemic. For a quick history, I know everybody here is probably aware that the Mallards were here for a very long time. They left in the 2017-2018 season, leaving a gap here in the sports scene. John and Missy Dawson, who are here tonight, stepped up to the plate. A lot of sports franchise brought it here. So the logo changed, the name changed, the league changed. But we still had some problems we had to fix from the teams that were here before. We had to fix relationships with corporate partners. Some of those had been frayed over the years. We made that a priority. And we also wanted to make it very clear to the Quad Cities that we were their team. We did that in a number of ways, engaging fans, being active, like the Steamwaders, getting our guys out in classes. And we also, in our first season, gave back $162,000 to local nonprofits. Not many minor league sports teams anywhere will do that, but we felt it was important that we showed the community that we were here for them. We built upon that the 2019-2020 season, more give back, more in our action. We grew as an organization and were, as Scott alluded to, improving. We were getting better, we were and are here to stay, but then 2020 happened. You can see in the bottom right corner there, some crazy jerseys on the ice. That was our Marvel superhero night on March 7th. They wore those jerseys during the game. We auctioned them up afterwards, raising money for the SAU Dance Marathon. Picture next to that, that Doug posing very nicely for the picture. That was our final game on March 8th. We were normal up until then. Two days later, March 10th, we had our kids' club party, which was a ton of fun. And then three days later, excuse me, two days after that, our season was suspended. It was back in that time where no one really knew what COVID was, but we knew we could not keep playing games. Three days later, our season was done. We have a 28-game home schedule, and we missed our final six home games of that season. That's at a very tough time for us when a lot of our expenses have been recognized already. We're, we're coasting, we're down the home stretch, and then we did not get those final six games. That was tough. We got some more tough news a few months later. The start got pushed back from October to December. We thought, hey, maybe there's a chance. And then October 6th, we were unfortunately forced to come to grasp with the fact that we did not have a chance to play. If we do not have between 2,000 and 3,000 people in the arena on a game night, we are in big trouble. And up until, I think, early February, we could have 50 people in the arena. Because of the protocols in the state of Illinois, that's not 50 fans, that's our, our team and our coaches, and the opposing team and coaches. It was just not, not doable for us. But we did make the commitment from the get-go to stay active in the community, even if we did not know we would be playing. On the left, it's something that seems very normal now, but at the time, curbside was a foreign concept, so we made a menu for all our sponsors, telling people how they can patronize their businesses, hours, et cetera. Storm masks, Radar, if you don't know, you will soon, our mascot, very popular guy. We made some coloring sheets, and then we took Radar out to the streets. We started this right in the heat of the pandemic. Everybody had been in their house a long time. Kids were going crazy, parents were going crazy. We brought Radar by to wave, just to say hello to the kids. And as you can see on the right, some big smiles. We thought this would be a one-day thing. It turned into like a two-week project. We went to over 100 houses over the course of two weeks, and I think gave parents a few minutes of reprieve and made a lot of Storm fans very happy. We did anything we could. Curbside trick-or-treating was very unique, but we did that. Went and recognized some sports teams. There you see the U10 girls team that plays over at Rivers Edge. Did not get to have a ton of fans at their championship game that they won. We went to congratulate them and stay engaged, excuse me, with the nonprofit organizations who we have maintained our relationships, Salvation Army Kettlebell Kickoff, and the Big Brothers Big Sisters Golf Tournament. And if you don't believe Radar is popular, he's got Cinderella status on that birthday cake. That was pretty impressive to me. I don't think this will play as PDF.
No.
Right? No problem. So the good news is that we are coming back. We had a big Friday a couple weeks ago. We went to Phase 5, which was, I'm sure, welcome for everybody in this room. We got to announce our opening night, October 15th, which we are very excited about. And I am a huge Doobie Brothers fan. The TaxSlayer Center announced that they will be coming to town in August. That was all on one Friday, great day. It was like the first day, it's like, we are out of this thing, finally. The problem is, as we gear up for opening night, as Doug alluded to, we have been left out of almost everything. We have been fortunate to get the PPP. It's allowed me to keep my job, which I am very grateful for. It's allowed us to keep our coach employed, and that's allowed him to maintain relationships with players. So when October 15th rolls around, John and I don't have to throw on our helmets and go out there and play. That is good news for everybody. We were left out of the Business Interruption Grant, which hurt. We were left out, Steamwaders, TaxSlayer Center left out. Our sister team in Peoria, and admittedly, admittedly, our rival team, got $65,000. The Peoria baseball team got $150,000. Their arena got $150,000. Though their arena actually had ended up giving it back, they were eligible, but Peoria got the Business Interruption Grant program, we did not. We were also originally expecting to get around half a million dollars from the shuttered venue grant program. They kind of molded that to not take care of the sports teams, so we missed out on that as well. We were ineligible for the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Program, and we've just been left out of the majority of initiatives out there, which is why we are asking for $164,000. That is a number that will let us get to the start of the season doing the things we need to do. We will be limping there very badly without that. Want to leave you with a few other numbers. In our first season in seven, five, seven eights, if you will, we have given back just shy of a quarter of a million dollars to local nonprofits. We did that through our jersey auctions, donations, all different ways. Doug really hit on something, I think, as well, quality of place. I'm only here because of the sports team. It's why I came to the Quad Cities, to work for it. I have a ton of friends I have made who, the Steamwaders, the Storm, the River Bandits, they are huge things that they love about living here. Pride and community as well, another thing Doug touched on, just having that logo, wearing it in airports, having people come up and ask it, who are they? That means a lot. And lastly, the Storm provides $25 million, according to Visit Quad Cities, in direct financial impact in the Quad City area. Of the three sports teams, we're right around $60 million. We provide almost half of that. The River Bandits, on the other side, have gotten from the city of Davenport, $5 million over the next 10 years. over the next 10 years for stadium renovations, and they have gotten $185,000 off their lease for the next 10 years, just as that lifeline. That is a lot of money, and we are not expecting that. If you would like to give it to us, that is fantastic. However, we know that there are a lot of businesses that need that support. So, again, the $164,000 we are asking for is what we really need to get to the finish line. Like I said, we've had a staff of one for about a year, we just got our second back, we're gonna have a staff half the size, this would help us do the things we need to do to, to get ready for a season in full. So, with that all, turn it over to questions for any of us, and thank you again for the opportunity to come and speak tonight.
Just to sum it up, so that's what the ask is for, $100,000 for restart money for, for us, 217 for the team, 165, or for the Steamwaders, 165 for the Storm, and then the outdoor project, the balance of $700,000 to try to bring that one home. We built something that would really be terrific for the community, so. Does anybody have questions of any of us?
Mr. O'Brien.
Would these outdoor events be concurrent with events at the Mark?
Yeah, potentially, yeah.
Potentially, so you wouldn't have to like cancel one to do the other?
No, no, it would, people would go there before the show, and we'd try to end them early enough because there's a hotel right there, so, you know, I don't know whether it's nine or 10 o'clock on a Friday or Saturday.
That's good, that was my next question.
You meant the TaxSlayer Center, right?
Did I call it the Mark?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I do sometimes.
That won't be the first time I'll do that, too. Also, this will be, I'd probably not have to ask you, will this be in separate motions to do this? Will they each be separated out, or is it gonna be one big motion?
I think that's all up to the council as it comes to decision-making time. We're not quite there yet with our process of examining all the art funding.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Scott, thanks, I appreciate laying all this out. You had mentioned about $6 million in capital improvements, can you go into that a little bit? You still have 6 million, or?
We spent over $2 million just during the shutdown, and we spent 1.2 just on COVID remediation projects, like making automated flush valves, mobile ordering, touches. But yeah, we, we always have a long-term capital plan as we go, and that's, that's what's in our capital plan, it rolls year to year, emergencies get moved up, and we use the money that's out of, that we, some of the money generated from the tuition tax, there's a 5%, 3% goes towards that, that we basically are taxing ourselves because we're taxing the shows, not the people that come to, and we're taxing, taxing the promoters, and on most shows, we're partnering with the promoters, so it's money that comes out of settlement. And then, the, what was the other part of the questions?
Just trying to understand the, the 6 million.
So, yeah, the, the other, I'm sorry, the other part of our capital investments gets paid for out of our reserves, and we're, we're down to about 1.4 million, I think it's projected by September. It goes up and down, when I got here, it was, it was right around there, I believe, a little higher, but we've, we've had it up high, up 12 million, and we just, we keep, every penny we make goes back into the building to keep it going, keep looking new, and it's something that most communities like ours don't have the luxury. If you look at any, any community that's got an arena of our size, it's, it's, the city's paying a lot, and it costs a lot to keep it going, but we've been very fortunate to have reserves and buildings paid for, we don't have debt service, and we, everything, every penny goes back in. So, if it runs out, then we gotta get help.
So, the 1.4 that's left over is that after the capital improvements that you were talking about?
No.
So?
So, we have to prioritize emergency ones we need to do, we have to try to build our coffers back up as we reopen, you know, in a good year, like, some years it's been as much as, you know, 1.8 million profit that goes back into the reserves, other, other years it's been, the year before I got here was like a negative 40,000, was the only time the building ever lost money, but then we were up to 1 million and, last year, or the last four years before COVID, we're the 500, 3, 3 is probably the lowest since I've been here, but probably averages, the average is probably about 500 to 700 a year, and, and what we throw back into the pool. So, we don't need 6 million to do those things right away, but, you know, equipment gets older, breaks, you have to project those things, so that's our projections.
Any other questions for our presenters? Yes, Mr. Went.
As far as, you know, Bass Street in this, what, capacity-wise, what's the differences of those? Are they comparable?
It's pretty similar, pretty much the same size, it's very similar square footage, but I'm thinking like, if we moved all the tables out and had somebody that was bigger, you might get, you know, 1,500 people out there, but typically, just for sitting down, having dinner, and watching whatever's going on, you might be looking at 100 or 200 people at, you know, on a weekend night.
Thank you so much, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thanks, Trutier.
So, we move to our agenda items, the first one being rescinding a local state of emergency declaration.
Okay, that would be me?
Yes.
Isn't that great? The first, first action item that I get to report on is putting an end to something that, that almost put an end to all of us, and that would be to repeal the resolution that put in place the emergency orders by the former mayor and the former administration, and that was Resolution 1066-2020. What we'd be looking for, short and simple, is to have the resolution rescinded and then putting back in place normal operations based upon what has happened here, based on the actions of Governor Pritzker, and going, removing all the restrictions statewide. So, we're just following suit and safe order and going forward with this repeal at this time.
Motion approved.
Second?
Motion to approve by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Went, sorry, you committed.
I was just looking across at Jeff over there, with the repeal of this, does this cause any issues? Because I know some of these emergency orders included a relaxing of cafe, sidewalk dining, and those sorts of things. Are we gonna run into any issues if we repeal this, that it's gonna cause any issues downtown? And I'm sorry, I didn't ask this in advance, I didn't think about it till I was looking at you.
I think we'll.
Yeah, I don't think that.
One of you wanna answer.
Yeah, I don't think that it, that it would, I mean, you're, they're already out there, they're already, they already have their tables all set, I'm not sure what problem we would perceive. Is it too many people on the sidewalks, or, I guess maybe I'm trying to understand the question better, Alderman.
Our, our legal counsel can also answer.
Yeah, because I wasn't here when you were putting it in place.
Potentially with the motion that was brought forward once, essentially the outdoor dining opportunities were able to have, I mean, that Alderman Waldron brought forward at the beginning of the outdoor dining season may, and could potentially from, depending on the corporate counsel's legal interpretation, be able to, to be a kind of, I guess, compartmentalized away from, from this agenda item, potentially.
As long as we're clear with that.
That'd be my interpretation.
They haven't come back yet.
Let's, how about we have Mark?
Yes.
Margaret weigh in.
Yeah.
Right, so he is correct. So, it will not interfere.
Okay.
Because it was a separate motion, it was separate.
Okay, as long as it's compartmentalized, I'm, I'm good.
Everyone understands that we're, we're able to keep sidewalk dining.
Right.
Don't want the unintended consequences.
Right, yeah, that's a good point.
So, that was part of our, you know, the way, because there were a number of orders that occurred, and some expired on their own, and then some, you know, were done separate like that one, so it was kind of a jigsaw puzzle.
Yes, Mr. Went.
Do we know which other ones, if this one is compartmentalized, are there others that are still, or can you let us know by next time? Marty may know.
Yes, Mr. Vonox.
I believe in April, this council passed a resolution keeping those sidewalk cafes open for the duration of the summer, so we'd have to go back and look at that.
I remember that as well.
There's no other compartmentalization of any other things that we've been doing, so.
Okay, good to know.
Oh, my recollection.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number two, surrounding property owner consent, 1,209 Fourth Avenue. We turn to Sir Vitas or Ms. Por.
Which one is this?
This is the liquor consent surrounding.
Sure. Three Brothers Hospitality LLC, you can see is doing business as Poor Brothers Craft Taproom, and they're looking for a Class B liquor license, and they have to have approval from the surround, according to the ordinance, they have to have approval from the surrounding property owners, one of which is the city, and I believe there are two other property owners who are affected, but we don't anticipate that there would be any issue based on communications that have happened with them, so they are looking for your approval at this point so that they can go forward with their plans to establish their outdoor seating area.
Move to approve.
Some motion by Alderman Went, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Timian. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Went.
I, I assume we haven't heard anything, because I think there's maybe two other property owners in that circle, I think, and maybe one of them's the hotel, through the thing, have we heard anything from them?
No, and they didn't anticipate any issue, but they have not returned those two forms yet.
Okay.
But three of the five were city properties, so they needed at least one, you know, consent from the city.
So, does that mean by?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Does that mean by approving that we would be, basically, we're signing off on it? Even if they objected, we'd be moving it forward?
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. We do have an other tonight, and I will invite Mr. Manis to the podium to share a little bit about something I think he's passed out to us, Avenue Flags Project, and I first want to say, you know, back in May, when we okayed the purchase of the brackets and poles to, to make flags on River Drive accessible, it was always my hope that we could get someone to help us with American flags for 4th of July, Memorial Day, Labor Day, all these important dates, and so I am pleased to turn the microphone over to Mr. Manis to talk about how that might happen.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
One second, Mr. Schmidt.
I'm a member of Optimus International, so I will be recusing myself from this.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Went.
Dudo.
Dudo, all right. Two members recusing themselves, thank you.
Let me crunch the numbers here real quick. No, but, I'm serious, no, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you to the honorable members of City Council for this opportunity to stand at the podium and, and talk about, I guess, what's next for the flag pole brackets along River Drive. We are approximately eight days and four, five hours away from the end of Pride Month. It was, as I had followed along through your guys, through City Council's action to, to install the Pride flags through the month of June for, for Pride Month, I immediately had visions of, okay, so the infrastructure for the hanging of the flags, such as a Pride flag, will be in place throughout that, that corridor along River Drive, and I immediately began to brainstorm as to how we could continue to utilize those, because now the, the flag pole brackets were ultimately installed through that piece of very simple infrastructure for, for downtown only, but important infrastructure. It undoubtedly adds a level of vibrancy and design aesthetic appeal to, to, to that incredibly important, arguably the most important corridor in, in the Quad Cities that the Quad Cities has to offer. So, and I'd like to certainly go on record to, to thank you all for, for the opportunity to have the community mulling my hometown and, and the city I work for, to have those flags displayed throughout the, the month of June for Pride Month. It made me very, very proud of, of my community. So, to that point, as I worked through, I guess, brainstorming aspects of process of what to do, I immediately thought of the Avenue of the Flags Project that is facilitated by the Breakfast Optimists Club. It's a wonderful program that has been installing American flags, both in residential properties and private business properties, as well as, there was a time that there were 100 of them installed along Ben Butterworth Parkway, to, to reach out to them for, for partnership. The, the initial conversation points that I've had with them have been very favorable. They meet on Wednesdays, they're actually going to be meeting tomorrow morning to, to discuss the potential of, of collaborating with the city to ultimately install their American flags, and some of the specifics are to be determined, and I'm, I'm very much looking forward to working with the city's corporate counsel to, to, I guess, bake into the specifics of a, you know, a potential memorandum, memorandum of, of understanding to, to ultimately enter into what I believe would be a genuine mutually beneficial partnership with the Breakfast Optimists Club to install flags sometime in the spring, until, you know, potentially like, let's say, Labor Day, right around Labor Day, throughout, you know, that outdoor flag season. I think the winter could be a little bit harsh for, for American flags, and it's, and it's important to honor and respect them, so, you know, that they would be essentially like what I would say fair weather flags through, through the outdoor flag season. So, I would certainly open it up for, for questions from, you know, council's perspective as to how, as, as staff you would like to proceed, but essentially, to, to kind of wrap up, my staff recommendation here tonight would be to look for approval, to potentially work with the Breakfast Optimists Club to come up with a situation to enter into mutually beneficial partnership with them that would support the organization, and their primary function is to help out the needy children in the community, to then also turn around and add a design element of American flags to, to downtown Moline, not to exceed $2,000 annually.
I make a motion to approve, that seems reasonable, I see their flags everywhere, my neighborhood looks awesome, and you wake up, they're all up there, and it just looks great, and we have those brackets, too. I mean, yeah, that's a, yeah, motion to.
Second.
Okay, so, so then our clerk has the wording very clearly. Your motion to approve is, I'm gonna sort of reiterate what he said.
To not expend more than $2,000 on a mutually beneficial partnership to have their flags displayed.
All right.
Thank you, Alderman.
Is that clear enough?
How can I polish it?
So, we've got a motion from Mr. Macias, and was there a second, I hear?
Second.
Second from Mr. O'Brien. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Timian.
Will these be, will the Optimists Club be responsible for installing and removing these flags from the flag poles?
They are undoubtedly open to, to, to that possibility. Our city staff, individual, Mr. Josh Whiting, who is our city electrician, would, would also be willing to help if, if that's, I guess, the policy in terms of the implementation of this flag project in downtown Moline that, that council would see. But, the Avenue of the Flags Project has a really large volunteer workforce that, that would really enjoy the opportunity.
I just, I wonder from a liability standpoint if the city should be responsible for installing or?
The answer is yes.
That would be my advice, yes. We could have them maybe sign no waiver, but we're probably better off for, you know, damage purposes and whatnot, have our staff do that.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
What do we do with the Pride flags? Do the city install those?
Yes. Yes.
We did those, yeah.
We own them.
And they'll be stored after this month, right, so?
And it would be, in my understanding, or, you know, let's say, think about the logistics of taking down the Pride Flags, which we own. While that's happening simultaneously, city staff could, in the boom truck bucket, have the American flags ready to go to plant those just as soon as the Pride Flags come down.
So, then, my question would be, what this, the number of $2,000, you know, that we would want, we would say in this motion is to make this happen, right?
Certainly.
That would account for the installation that we would pay, that would, it would cost to have our staff help with that while they're taking down the other flags, but then also for the purchase of or rental of the flags from the Optimists Club?
Yeah, depending on how we wanted to find, I guess, our use of the flags, whether it's what could be considered like a lease or licensing agreement where we temporarily own the flags.
Well, I suppose we already did vote, like, we've already planned to expend the money to take them down, since we voted to take, spend the money to put them up. So, in this particular case, this year, we're covered in that sense. But I think, as you work out an agreement, we want to be mindful of that piece of it. And I guess I would like to say, we should probably be very clear, we're talking about this year, that there could be other options where other people want to sponsor that next year for the city, or they want to donate the flags as a gift, as we had the other flags donated. I think we have to maybe take one year at a time, or at least try to do it for this year, and then see how we can plan ahead for next year. Does that make sense? Yes, Mr. Waldron?
Margaret, one of the nuances we talked about with the last special interest group was that we wanted those flags to be donated, and they were donated, then we installed them. Obviously, the American flag is different than a special interest group. Do you have any issues with that, that these should be donated? And I understand you can do an MOU to make a lease or whatever they're talking about. Do you have any liability legal issues related to not donating them?
So, my concern, and I haven't really thought this through yet, is not really about the flag, but the organization that donates, or that we purchase from. I don't know if this group, or whether that could raise issues that were spawned between their missions. I do have some concern about that, but again, I have not thought it through. I did not hear about this until right now.
And we apologize for that, Margaret, that it came to us this afternoon.
Um, I do see American flags as totally different. So, they clearly represent our country, and, you know, that is different than other groups' interests. I had, yeah.
And I would like to make a point in reference to, specifically, the uniqueness of the Breakfast Optimists Group. They hand-make these flags, which I think separates them out from ultimately, of course, going on Amazon and buying flags. It kind of, I guess, in my staff perspective, creates a sole proprietorship, that they're providing a service to the community that you would not be able to find anywhere else in the Quad Cities, potentially.
Well, they do acquire flags pretty regularly, you know, here and other-
One right outside.
Yeah.
Number of them, actually.
So, in that regard, it's having no difference.
Yes, Mr. Moyer.
Thank you. Is it, is it our intent to get these flags up, then, before July 4th?
Yeah.
So, we'll need to vote in the council meeting as well?
Um, I checked.
Because we're on the-
Margaret, please.
What I'm wondering is if we can just say, if we can approve it just contingent upon them working it out.
Yeah, that's what would be the idea.
You know what? We could ratify under 13.
Okay, yeah. I knew there was like a sometime, I don't know that this is non-proton, but you're saying ratifying later-
Exactly.
-is a way to help us get it up at an appropriate time, and then also have it done with enough oversight from you. So, are we clear on what we're asking through this motion? The motion is, would you repeat it, or do you have questions, comments?
We had a, we did have a brief, a very brief meeting, the mayor and I and Jeff, and
so that, so that you're as clear as I was. I mean, we would be buying the flags from the Optimists Club. The $2,000 goes toward these handmade flags, correct? You know, if I'm wrong anywhere, just let me know. We'd buy it from them. We were reusing the poles that we have, so we're not really buying new poles, correct?
They have poles that they would also be able to help provide.
That fit into the standard that we have attached today. So, it's the poles and the flags that would be, and there's 30 of them total.
Thirty, yes.
And that 30 is covered by the $2,000 that would be supporting the Optimists Club's efforts, since they hand-make them. I mean, it's kind of an interesting relationship, you know, made, produced locally, and then displayed locally, and then our resources to acquire them then are used locally to support their hunger programs for the children, needy families.
Mr. Timian.
That's how I see it.
Just for clarification, are we talking about purchasing them or leasing them?
Purchase.
Because I heard the administrator say, purchase. My understanding was, this is using the, they put them up, or it's their property, we're just leasing them.
The goal is going to be to work with the corporate council as we continue to bring together this MOU to align it and bake in, I guess, the wording and the language that falls in line with city policy in terms of purchasing.
So, I think in your motion, it should be to purchase or receive a donation of American flags, because frankly, I'm not sure which is a better route to go.
So, you can amend your motion.
Okay. But can I ask, also, but doesn't this group, like, take their flags down and store them themselves? So, it's kind of like a-
Traditionally, with the partnerships, they-
Or so, how, what would we call them?
Yeah.
I think-
We'll work it out. Yeah, we'll work it out, okay.
I think if Mr. Manis has the guidance that we want to have American flags up, right? And that this group is a group that can do it quickly for us, and that our preference would be to purchase or have them be donated, right, and that's in line with what we've, we're doing, then those are the guidelines, and it has to all be less than $2,000.
Yeah.
Then that's the guidelines you can go and talk to them about tomorrow at the meeting that you were informed about. And if that, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And then-
It's very fast.
I know.
It's fine. We'll work it out.
Okay. So, you're gonna amend your motion?
So, I'm going to amend my motion that we purchase or receive as a donation these flags and not spend less than $2,000. And we'll figure out, you two will figure out the details so that-
Not more than $2,000, no.
Not more than $2,000.
Not more than $2,000, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Not more than $2,000.
And they would be from the-
Breakfast Optimists Club, right.
And I'll second the amended motion.
And you'll second the amended motion. Any further discussion? And I guess I'll just put out there, again, very short notice today, we don't have a meeting next week. The holiday is upon us. You said eight days away, or, oh, my gosh, is it really eight days away?
It's pretty close, yeah.
And so, it is crazy, but it's a great thing for our community, and so, I personally believe so. I appreciate staff's willingness to work it out on behalf of everyone with those guidelines involved.
And of course, as we continue to administratively work through this in the months and years to come, the goal is going to be to maintain the diligence to come to all of you much more in advance as we continue to-
Yeah.
-implement this design element to downtown Moline.
That sounds great. So, I will ask for a roll call vote, because it has to do with money expenditure at some point, potential. Alderman Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Abstained.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Abstained.
Williams?
Aye.
Six ayes, two abstentions. That motion passes. Thank you, sir. We'll look forward to an update.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment tonight? All right, hearing none, we'll close out our committee of the whole and move to our regular meeting. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Macias, do you have an invocation?
No, don't.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Present.
Parker?
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry.
Macias?
Present.
I thought I would not do that. Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Minutes of June 15, 2021, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole on June 22, 2021. Resolutions. Council Bill 1145-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a business and economic growth partnership agreement between the city of Moline, Illinois, and the Quad Cities Chamber, to enable more collaboration and efficient relationships that facilitate business growth and investment in our city. Council Bill 1146-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase an Altech Model AT48M articulating telescopic aerial device with a fiberglass upper boom and fiberglass insulator in the articulating arm with Altech Industries Incorporated for the amount of $167,823. Council Bill 1147-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase a ProPatch Model HL425-80DHER with HG Industries Incorporated for the amount of $82,819. Council Bill 1148-2021, a resolution authorizing the approval of a quote from Davenport Electric Contract Company for materials and installation of traffic signal modifications at 23rd Street and River Drive for the amount of $23,776. Council Bill 1149-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a licensing and concession agreement between the city of Moline and Little Stevie's Taste of Something LLC to sell food and beverages from a mobile food unit at the northeast parking lot of Stevens Park from July 17, 2021 through July 16, 2023, as weather permits, and at the city's sole discretion, and authorizing city staff to do any and all that's necessary to fulfill the terms of the licensing and concession agreement. Council Bill 1150-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with In situ Forum Technologies USA LLC for project number 1356, 2021 sewer lining program for the amount of $299,292.80.
Move to approve the consent agendas numbers two through six.
Second.
And, yeah, and we need to, point of order or clarification, or, Mr. Macias, you need to-
I need to recuse myself from item number one.
So, we'll vote on two through six.
Yes, okay. I'm sorry, which item, number one?
Two, yeah, two through six right now.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Went, did I, I must have just not heard you say, did you, you said that when you moved to-
Yeah.
-made the motion two through six. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we're clear. That motion, we've had one motion. Did we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Timian. Roll call, please. Alderman Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
Move to approve Council Resolution 1145-2021.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Went, seconded by Alderman Timian. Roll call, please. Alderman Macias?
Excuse myself.
Just say abstained.
Or abstained.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one abstention, and that motion carries.
Your Honor, before we go on, can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Tony, Council Bill Resolution 1150-2021, when did that come to committee? I don't remember that last, last week.
Could I answer? Yes, our clerk will answer that question. I asked her that earlier on the-
That was one of those items that we discussed, that if it was already approved as part of the budget, it would go directly onto the consent agenda. And then, you can always ask for that to be removed to the non-consent if you'd like to have discussion.
Okay. It might be nice to designate that somehow, because how would one know unless one looks back?
The one way that I was doing that was including the council action report. Normally, you won't see council action reports attached to the council agenda, but I do attach it if it's one of those types of items, because it's the first time you see it, and you need that memo. Does that help?
Yep. Could we do it somewhere on the face? Because I think it'd be easy if it's on the first two pages rather than having to hunt down through and-
Sure.
-figure if it is or isn't.
So, I'll talk with Margaret about that, and we'll figure out a way to designate that. Thanks. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances, Council Bill 4005-2021, a special ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an economic incentive and tax increment allocation financing redevelopment agreement between the city of Moline and Next Gen Development Corporation, and to execute any necessary agreements referenced therein, and authorizing all appropriate city officers and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities pursuant to said agreement. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Yes, Mr. Went.
I move for consideration of Special Ordinance 4005-2021.
Second.
All right, that council bill has been motioned and seconded for consideration. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Went.
So, I move to do the consideration on this for a couple of reasons. One, I wanted to just get some clarification. We had some discussion last time about facade and how this was developed, and I think we've got some additional information that I think would be good for the council regarding the facade, so.
Mayor, who was the second on that one?
Mr. Moyer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two. I have three.
Thank you.
This is the most important.
We have.
Justin with Next Gen Development. Appreciate your guys' time. I typed up a little spreadsheet of what my anticipated cost for facade was. Now, there's been some discussion on what exactly facade is in this project, so I'm hoping this clarifies a little bit of what I'm committing to do on this building and, or what I'm trying to get after.
Sure.
I've also included, I put the window quotes in there just so you guys can see that, you know, I'm not bluffing. This is a, it's a very big purchase for me, and that doesn't even include, I gotta get old windows out, I gotta put new windows in. There's some information in there. It's a three-story building. I gotta get equipment to even get there, so, also not cheap. to even get there, so also not cheap, so just a few details, I hope that will help clarify some of my requests, I guess, so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I think that clears up a lot of the discussion. And so with that, because of material costs and everything that's going and that we're not actually meeting again until July 13th, just so everybody who's maybe new to the council, if two-thirds of us agree to consider, we can actually then vote to approve this tonight and get them moving on it. So that's why I made the motion to consider and I hope you guys will support that.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
I think this looks like 116,000. That was like a lot of money on facade. I will say that. I don't know, I know materials are expensive now.
So I just, I, this is my first building, my first project, so I know the, my building has two facades and I would say it's probably three times bigger than the average facade in downtown because I do have, you know, my normal ones, but it's all sort of side of the street. So there's 30-some windows and it needs, just, I want to clean it up and make it look good.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Williams.
I'll second that motion.
It was seconded by.
Then I won't.
You're gonna third it? Okay. All right, so hearing no more discussion or questions, roll call, please.
I'm gonna make you vote last. Alderman, Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
So move to approve the development agreement.
Is there a second? Motion to approve from.
Second.
Yes. Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Williams. Any further discussion?
Looking forward to it.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman, Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And then motion passes.
Okay, we are to miscellaneous business. Mr. Williams.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Macias.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Went.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a statement I'd like to read just because it's a little long and I don't want to wing it. So as many of you know, I'm a bicyclist and I originally hoped to come here tonight to talk about the Quad Cities' fourth bicycle death in the last seven to eight weeks. And this accident occurred just a few streets away from where I was cycling that same morning. But then yesterday, while I was riding, I was struck by a car and I was extremely lucky. I was bruised, sore, my bicycle needs a lot of work, but I walked away. An extra foot or two and I would not have been as fortunate. But this is not the first sign that I've been hit by a vehicle while riding to or from Ben Butterworth Parkway and I suspect it will not be the last. I also know that my experience is not unique. These type of incidents often go unreported and are therefore unlikely to be factored into the local statistics. As long as there are no major injuries or property damage, police reports are rarely filed and as a result, the drivers are sometimes not held accountable and the cyclists are effectively ignored. The Quad Cities area has about 380,000 people and in the last, I guess now, eight weeks, we've had four fatalities. This might seem like a small number, but when you compare us to Chicago with 2.7 million people, they average six fatalities a year. And so the question is, what's the difference between us and them that they have such a low number per population? And it's, it's multifaceted, of course, there's no silver bullet, but Chicago has the infrastructure to accommodate alternative modes of transportation and the drivers in Chicago have learned how to coexist with cyclists and pedestrians. These issues are not only preventable in Moline, but the city has planned on addressing them for years. We have a bike waste plan, it's, the engineering's done, but we lack the staff to implement it. We have bicycle lanes, but they are disconnected and sporadic. I fear that we've mistaken our own inaction with prudence and we assume that by taking our time on issues like this, we get the best and cheapest possible result, but we oftentimes end up with neither. I, I'm urging the council to use this opportunity to make Moline livable and by livable, I mean a city that is drivable, walkable and bikable, a city where people can ride their bikes to work, walk to their neighborhood restaurant and drive like they normally do. Right now, Moline is mostly only drivable. Some neighborhoods lack sidewalks, other neighborhoods have sidewalks, but they're unsafe. We lack actual bicycle lanes. The easiest way to attract and retain residents is by promoting safety and that starts with the very sidewalks and roads that we use every day. I want to just reiterate that our roads can be very scary on a bicycle as, if you're not in a car and if you don't believe me, I urge all of you to ride your bike to city council meeting next week. I ask you to ride your bike to the store or even down to the parkway from your home and it, it can be, it can be often frightening. I will be meeting with the city administrator later this week and will be discussing this further and I will be having meetings with local members of the community and organizations that want to promote this as well. And I would urge, again, the council to stop making excuses for inaction and, and to look for solutions for this kind of problem. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Went.
I just want to reiterate what Alderman, Timian had said. I've been on council now for six years and have been, as you guys know, have been really pushing, trying to get this bike waste plan in place. It is something that we have been working on and when we talk about staff, I encourage Bob that we, when we hire staff, we hire staff that actually will implement policy. I, I've got an email right here of a former staff member that led that department that specifically said, "We just did that to appease people, it was perfunctory, we weren't really going to implement it." But it was a policy of the, of the council and so it was fighting against entrenched ideas, old-school engineering that we was actually, was fighting against what the council wanted. And so I, I couldn't agree with you more and that's why when it comes to hiring and moving forward, getting the right people in place that is willing to implement the policies that this council wants to. We, we do have a map now that shows, Alderman, Moyer and I have been worked on it, of where we were three years ago, which was basically Kiwanis and Ben Butterworth and where we are and the grants and things that we have in place to start to build that network. It's not enough, it's not fast enough, but with the resources we have, it, it is moving in that right direction and, and I appreciate your, your candor on this and sorry you got hit, but we, we are moving in the right direction and I appreciate you pushing this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timian.
Nothing.
Mr. Moyer. Mr. O'Brien.
I would appreciate what Alderman, Timian said too. I think it also reduces our carbon footprint, more people riding bicycles. I'm probably not gonna ride one, but you know, more people, the more people that ride bicycles, less wear and tear on the roads.
Exactly. It makes our roads, it could last longer.
Right. Yeah. I got a question. It seems like, and I, I'm hesitant to say this, but it seems like the fireworks are a little bit less than they were last year. I'm still hearing them, but they're so, I mean, the way they've been upgraded, they're so loud now, it could be at East Moline, I mean, I don't know. I'm just curious. Just about East Moline. Have you had, I mean, have you had a lot of calls or, as a police and fire, has a fire had ambulance calls for use of fireworks?
To my knowledge.
Okay.
I will have to look up the call number.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldron.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, then it's to me. Just wanted to let you know that today, as I said, on the transportation committee of the Bi-State Committee, we did get an update from George Ryan about I-74 and everything's on time, so we should be, you know, they'll gradually be opening things up as we go here and, and be on time to open up by the end of the year. We did host, Mr. Macias and staff, Mr. Von Hags and KJ Whitley, listing posts last night at the Onto Verestine Center, was nicely attended, smaller group, but very engaged. We got some similar feedback that we've been hearing, so we'll continue to compile that. I'm starting to talk about the, the chart that I gave y'all, right? As three baskets of information that we'll be pulling together and working together to get a timeline put together for when we actually have to make decisions. We still have not received the, our first disbursement of the ARP funds yet, correct?
Right.
Great. I should get you that too? Correct.
Yes.
So anyway, encourage you to keep asking people to take the survey, take some copies with you. We are getting responses on those as well, so that's helpful. And just to let you know, tomorrow I will be initiating formally the, the, one of the baskets on that, the regional conversation. I have had good conversations one-on-one with some other city leaders in the area, getting great ideas and, and so, just so you know, we're, that's a lunchtime conversation that I've invited local mayors and finance directors and city administrators to, to see where everyone is at and see what kinds of priorities are rising to the top for other cities. And I will compile all that and share it with you. So, anything from staff?
I have nothing.
Mr. Galt, do you have something for us?
Well, Alderman, O'Brien's intuition is, looks to be very good. Last year, from June 1st to the same day today, the 22nd, we had 114 calls. We've only had 45 in this year, so I'm not a math major, somebody has to do percentage for me on that. But, yeah, so.
We're not quarantined this year like we were last year.
Certainly is, looks to be better. You know, last year was a little bit of an anomaly. I, I'm hopeful that so many people home in the quarantine and doing their own fireworks. So I guess my ask to you would be that you could encourage all of your residents and your wards to attend the largest fireworks display from Chicago to Denver, right here in River City on July 3rd at 9:30 PM, two barges that shoot off a red, white boom visible from Moline, as well as you could catch the East Moline probably down by the, the tax layer. So, you know, from the police department's standpoint, this is a difficult annoyance and, and obviously state law violation to enforce. And so compliance is our number one goal here is if you can get the message out on the platforms that you have, we will be starting messaging on Monday to try to get that out, to get compliance for either a reduced timeframe, you know, if we can get people to end anything by 10:00 PM, that obviously helps. But you will get complaints, we will get complaints. It was outrageous last year, we had over 100 and, we had 177 calls in that weekend around 4th of July last year and we usually average somewhere around 70 to 100 in that, that time period. So, you know, it was a 14% increase over last year and then we had an enormous amount of regular police calls. We actually were inundated with police and fireworks calls that whole, that whole weekend. So this will be a tough weekend for us, is obviously on a, on a weekend with 4th of July, as you know, and people are gonna be out, so we have a lot of challenges ahead. We will have extra patrols out on, on the weekend of 4th of July, both to address fireworks complaints as well as probably the increased activity that we'll have. So we hope that everybody celebrates safely. If not, fire chief will be around with his team to clean up the mess, but we certainly hope that everybody celebrates safely, hope that you could advocate for us for compliance is what we're looking for.
Thank you so much, Chief Galt. Okay, any public comment this evening? Hearing done, I believe we do have executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, 5 ILCS 120/2C11, an appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, 5 ILCS 120/2C1.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Williams, seconded by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman, Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.[1793.71]